Someone got a comment on their thing. Want to turn this on? If you need to use it, they'll be here. If the audience can't hear you, okay? All right. What we're gonna do tonight, we're just gonna go through the agenda. You know, I think everybody's got a copy of the agenda. Has had an opportunity to go through it and look at it. And talk about it. And we'll discuss it tonight and we'll... And what we'll do as we go through each item, if you have any question about each item, we'll allow, we'll allow the audience to ask questions about each item tonight. It's your opportunity to do that tonight. What we, what we do add is that the same, two different people has the same question. That's okay with you guys. So we can move the, move the meeting forward. So if you have anything different, say it. We allow you to do that tonight because this is a night for you to have a discussion. Okay? All right. That's okay with everybody? Okay, good. All right, we'll go, uh... Let's, let's, let's just go to the resolution first. We'll come back to the public hearing. These, uh, these resolutions. I have my thoughts on, on a few. I went through them. And we're just taking, taking one by one. Resolution 2016 R 169 authorized the mayor to sign an agreement out of the Department of Transportation to develop a payment agreement. At this time, any discussion from the council?
Just the eight to twenty match from what I understand.
That's correct.
Just a continuation in fourteen thousand that set aside as far as the city's portion.
Right.
That particular amount, um, where is it coming from?
I'm not quite sure where that, that, uh, that match is coming from. I would think with...
The gas tax.
I would think gas tax, wouldn't it? This probably did it with the roads.
Yeah.
This is the study for the repaving.
For paving.
On the north side.
Yes.
On the north side of four fifty-nine.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe it's kind of from that, from the gas tax.
I think we got a... Did everybody get the update on the, uh, or this was from... Yeah, as far as what we had in tow, it was from the nine one one, the gas tax one.
Right. Wherever you go, that's where you go.
Okay. And maybe... But it's fourteen thousand dollars. That was my only question as far as where the funds, where, where they were coming from.
Looks good. It's got a third day cancellation, so it's more protected in that sense. It's a little one-sided for us producing for them, but not necessarily them producing for us. Third day out.
I'm reading through this. I, I didn't, other than Bobby Chish's question as far as where the fourteen's coming from, that was really my only thought on the matter.
Is this just a study to see what roads need to be paved?
Just a third. I think it was on the north side. Paying that number one time on four lane.
Alongside the hill? Does the state want to supply any funds for the paving?
I think this is a match. It's kind of a match.
Well, this is a match for the study. It's not a match for the paving.
I don't think they're gonna... We've already got the money for the paving on the north side, right?
Right, that's, that's the A-trick.
That's the A-trick.
That's the A-trick, right, that we got.
That's right. That's right.
But the portion, uh, I guess the portion...
Okay, I thought, wait a minute now. We're talking about the north side of the branch mill road? Or the north side of the Carson River tracks with Birmingham and the north side of...
No, I think this is the, this is the road, yeah. Am I correct on that?
There's nothing specified in the contract.
I thought this was for city paving throughout the city.
Okay. I thought this was for the city.
So it's not the south side?
Yeah, this is for, right throughout the city.
This is, this is a study saying, uh, being done by, I believe, Sane and Associates? Are they the ones doing this?
That's who was originally paying.
Okay, and they're gonna do a survey of all of the roads in the city of Irondale and make a judgment call on what needs to be repaved. That's what I've always understood this to be.
And put it in chronological order for us to follow.
Right, as opposed to us making decisions in our own personal district. The study is to be done to say, hey, this is what we've identified as our problems.
They've already done this. They did it a year ago.
Okay.
Sane and Associates did.
Okay.
And when I, I went over the, the roads that needed to be paved in my district, they hadn't even looked at the ones that I told them needed, were worse than the ones they picked out.
So this is not what I'm thinking of?
I'm not sure what it is. It said they don't, forty-six thousand dollars to look at the roads. And we gotta do a five percent match, but it doesn't say what roads. And then, uh, they just gonna give us a report and say, this is, uh, this is the road you need to be paved. Well, you know, the, and they did it at District Four. They didn't do a very good job of it because...
Right.
They pointed out that needed to be paved within the nearest man that's more than I showed them.
Y'all had this discussion...
I showed them several that was worse than what they wanted.
Wanted to change.
Right.
And I thought it was a citywide study. That's what I heard sitting in the audience.
Right.
A citywide study. They would look at all roads, not by district. Not by ones we recommend. They would look at all roads and then put it in chronological order.
Right.
On the condition of the roads.
Right, and right on the, the front page of the agreement. Whereas the state and city desire to cooperate in a pavement management study for the city of Irondale. That's what it says.
Well, I think we need, I think we need to, we'll talk to Sane and Associates because they've already done a survey of the roads.
Yeah, and they asked, could we ask a question to Frank? He's on Public Works. Frank, do you have any, uh, any input on this paving project?
I was under the understanding that they did this report last year.
Yeah.
So this, this has been done?
Yes, that they identified the roads. Now, if they're doing a reevaluation, this is the first time.
Okay. So I can go then, Tom?
All right. They, they did, they did. They went in each district and Terry, you're right. And they're the ones who identified and came back to us and asked us, okay, these are the ones we have identified, particularly in your district or whatever. But it was state, it was citywide.
Mm-hmm.
It was.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know why we should have to pay for the same town.
I don't know what this...
They got a report already. Well, they need to update their report maybe, but not, not a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars worth.
So...
They need to, they need to come back to us and say, hey, this is what we did last time and, and maybe they need to update it. But I don't, I don't think we need, uh, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of riding around looking at roads. And they've already done it.
I might suggest that you just put it off then. I, this, this occurred, obviously, the letter's dated August twenty-fourth, so before David or Steve or myself are here. So you all have the, the history on it. I, my impression is, and my thought is the same as what David said and Steve said, is that from sitting in the audience and from what we've heard just publicly outside of this round, is that there was a study to be conducted on, coming up this year on all the streets in Irondale to determine the, the highest priority streets. As opposed to every, every council, district lobbying for their own streets. And do that. So that was my understanding. I mean, I, I have no, no knowledge of this because like I said, this all occurred prior to, prior to August.
And, and they have that information. I mean, even though it was in, you know, in our districts, they're the ones who went out and identified. We put it on them. Because of course, everyone wanted, you know, streets, all the streets paved in their district, of course. But, you know, we put it on them and really took it out of our hands. So they have something, same has some kind of state.
I wonder, was that though by district? That they identified the worst street in each district?
We did, we had an...
As opposed to the worst streets in the city.
We had an excess of the, uh, the gas tax. We took like three and seventy-five thousand dollars per district. And then they went out and identified the worst, what they considered the worst roads in each district. And then, uh, well, I got with, with them and we rolled over and looked at the roads they did. They identified in, in District Four. And then I took them and showed them the roads that I identified. And so, uh, I don't know if, if, if they just missed the roads that I, I took them to or if they didn't do a very good job for what, but...
But I think it was, it was there to see. I mean, it was what they thought about it.
Mm-hmm.
What's the guy's name?
My job is...
No, what's the, what's the other guy?
Darren.
Darren.
Yeah, Darren's the one that did it.
Yeah, I wrote with Darren.
Yeah.
So, uh, so why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we just postpone this one? Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this one over to you, to you for that more information.
It's only a general, we'll have to take it tomorrow night.
Well, how about this? How, how about if I find the information out tomorrow? I communicate that with you all, then you can make the decision whether you wanna move forward tomorrow night or whether you wanna take it off the agenda.
Right.
All right, sir. Any, any question from the audience on that, from number one? Do you all have a copy of the agenda?
No.
Can we, uh... Tricia, could you get us...
I can't print anything. If you'll give me a copy, I'll come and come.
Here you go. Tell me, try to get it in here.
Bobby Douglas, please, we're trying to get the council to...
Is she still on?
Counselor.
Tell her it isn't printed.
That's your break, mine, but... Tricia? Question?
Sure.
How about you?
Resolution 2016 R 170 authorized the fire department to apply for home, home security assistance to the firefighter. Chief, if you want to just talk about that one first.
Yes, sir. Right now, currently, we have, uh, you know, three stations. And in each station, we have a paramedic, what we call engine company. You see a fire truck, not only do we put out fires with that vehicle, but we respond to emergency medical calls. And we have advanced life support, uh, equipment on there. These, uh, life packs, as we call them, they will be able to read people's, you know, heart rhythms. You know, you can do a twelve week UKG. You can detect, uh, many things that could be going wrong within their, you know, uh, circulatory system. You can defibrillate them if their heart stops. You can pace them. And some of the units that we're using, um, they are, two of them are about fifteen years old. They're going obsolete. And we use, uh, uh, physiocontrol comes by and they do our maintenance on us. We keep them up today so that they're well maintained. But there's gonna be, they're no longer making these life pack twelves. And so we wanted to upgrade to the life pack fifteen. And, uh, there are so many instances where these are actually used and they actually save people's lives, you know, that they're really, really worth the money. But, uh, what we're doing is asking for this on a grant so that you can save the city and the burden of replacing them. Uh, the grant would be awarded through, um, home security thing. It's a five percent match. And so, um, the figure on that...
Sixty-five ninety-seven?
Yeah. My math is a little different from that. It's actually, I calculated it to be six thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars is what I calculated to be. So it would be less than seven thousand dollars. And so this, if we could get this, it would be a real windfall for the city.
Do you want to apply for it?
Well, we have to have your permission to make the application. And, uh, so all we're doing is asking for permission. And, um, and so if you, you know, give us that permission, I think by the end of the week, we'd make the, uh, application to them.
Okay.
Counsel. I mean, I like it. We've got a, we've got to have equipment that is up to code when you're talking about.
Yes.
I mean, and if these things are going obsolete and you can't continue to maintain them any longer, then that would make sense to go new.
Right, and we're trying to do this, that our people that certify them and do repairs on them, say parts are becoming harder and harder to come by for them. These are very expensive pieces of equipment. They're highly technical. They have to be calibrated. They're tested, you know. And, uh, which we want them to be a very guest for our citizens. And I think that, uh, this is a, you know, worthy cause right here.
Question. What are we doing with those?
Well, what we would do with the old ones, we would look at them and try to keep at least one of them as a reserve, you know, in case, uh, something should happen, you know. It, it could be like, you know, if one has to be repaired or can't be repaired in a timely fashion, then we'd have the reserve that we can go to. Or in cases of a wide-scale disaster, we would have it as a reserve that we could, we've got enough paramedics that we could actually put, you know, uh, this on another engine company. Whereas we typically run three engines in the city. We could put a fourth one into service then to be able to, you know, provide, uh, this ALS support service.
So we'll keep the, keep the...
Yes, well, what we do is at least keep one of them. And it could be that we can negotiate with, uh, this company to see if they would give us some sort of a, um... Nothing's committed on this, but I mean, we could, we'll try to get maybe some sort of trading or credit on it, you know.
I just think it's more so volunteer by partners, but I mean, you know...
Well, yeah, here you, well, yeah, and that's not a, a bad, you know, thought, but, you know, they would still face the same issues we're facing. It's like the, you know, being obsolete, you know, and thus not being able to get, um, any parts for it. And that's, uh, the, the thought's good. I don't know how it would actually work out. But, you know, we, we're not opposed to helping out our volunteer firefighter friend.
My next question is, the sixty-fives, well, sixty-nine, is that coming out of the fire budget or, you know, five percent?
Well, you know, we, we put the budget together long before this was ever calculated to be. So we don't, we, we have no planning for this. Uh, the, maybe the grants, once they're submitted, they could be well into next year before they make any awards. You know, they, it could be next June before we get any word that they're gonna award this or not. That's kind of downside doing this. I really hate that. I mean, I can take no for an answer if they tell them in a timely fashion, but they don't do that. Because they don't tell you yes in a timely fashion either. So, anyway, I'm looking at your question, Bobby. But, you know, other than that, no, we have not set aside any funds for that match. We do get the award at the end, we have to go seeking the funding for it.
Just looking at this, obviously, we'll get to this budget conversation here eventually, but I was just looking at you guys' section of this, paramedic supplies, you know, twenty thousand. This hasn't been approved yet, but that is...
It's, that's a possible, yeah, possibility there.
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, pledge it though, to it. We'd have to kind of take it out of that pot. So, just a thought.
Yeah, I think we need to know as far, as far as the funding source, you know, where it's gonna come from.
I guess, uh, the council has pledged a thousand dollars out of the... One, two, three, four, five, mayor, six thousand. And I'll find a thousand in the fire department. Okay, I guess I'll shut up now. Okay, any other question?
And that would be purchased not as a capital expenditure?
No, I don't think so.
That's, uh, no, it's not. Yeah, because of the fact that, you know, um, I guess that the, uh, one thing, the uncertainty of it, you know. It just, it really, I like, you know, getting the grants, it's the fact of knowing how to plan ahead. It really handicatches and stuff. It is what it is.
Any other question from the council? And question from the audience on that, on Resolution 2016 R 170, one seventy? All right, let's move to the next. Resolution 2016 R 170 was approved for longevity playtime for the city of Irondale in the line of not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Mayor, your name's on that one.
Yeah, my name's on the log.
We're gonna try to change it. We're gonna try to change that in the future.
I, I understand for those of you who are... Those of you who are, have been on the council previous years, that's a, that's an item that comes up each year. Uh, there are certain, and I don't know all the details of it, but there are certain, um, employees who are eligible for longevity plot pay if the council approves it. The amount I'm told is up to thirty-five thousand dollars. It's based off seniority. It's your call on what you do. I mean, it's like any other, whether it's fire department or, or any other expenditure, you gotta, you gotta find where the money's gonna come from, uh, to cover it if you approve it.
Usually it's in the budget when the mayor sets the budget out recently.
Well, and I...
And Susan, like you're shaking your head, yeah.
And I under...
It's already been calculated into the budget.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm simply saying it is a conscious decision that you make. If you're gonna spend thirty-five thousand dollars, you've gotta have the thirty thou... So it's, I'm not, I'm not lobbying for or against it. I'm simply saying it's thirty-five thousand dollars. It has to come from somewhere. And, uh, just be, whether it's in the budget or not in the budget, it still has to be real money. And, um, I don't, I mean, that's, that's the extent of my knowledge on this particular one. It is a one, it is an all or nothing. So you, you reward employees perhaps who, um, don't really deserve it based off performance. And if you don't do it, you tell one of them, you do really deserve it. So that's a call for you all to make.
And it's, uh, they have to be here, I think, five years to qualify. And then it's graduated up to, I think, twenty years. Bob, you're shaking your head. Do you remember?
I know the minimum's five. I think the maximum's twenty, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, and at that point, it makes, it makes out on, what is it? And it's act, it serves as a Christmas bonus because it is...
Yeah, I think it ranges from three to six hundred dollars per employee. Some of you will speak to that, but...
I think last year, you know, just based off the income statement, um, we spent eleven hundred dollars. As of September thirty, as far as when our fiscal year ended, um, we spent up to eleven hundred dollars, based on the income statement that I have.
It's been more than one hundred dollars, it's two or three, but...
Just based on the income statement that I have. And this period ending nine thirty, twenty sixteen.
Okay, so three of you at least have some history on this. I brought some folks in the audience. But, um, that's the extent of my knowledge on this particular topic.
And was this something as part of the Jefferson County personnel?
No.
Something...
There's something the city's done every year for, as long as I've been on the council and all before then.
It's already built into the numbers that we're using that we're making a...
It's in the current numbers on the budget.
It should be in, it's in the budget already. For the COVID, it's in the budget. We just have to okay it, for them to distribute it to those employees to, to get it.
Any other question from the council? Does anybody in the audience have any question concerning longevity plan? Yes.
Is the plan for employee retention, is that the purpose of having the plan?
I, I think the plan is reward...
It serves like a Christmas bonus.
Christmas bonus for...
It's given, I think, about the middle of December to employees.
Yeah.
And maybe five years or more.
Right. Yeah, kind of Christmas. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
So have, what did you have decide?
We haven't decided anything. We can't, we can't really decide.
We won't decide till tomorrow night.
What, what was it last year? What did we budget for last year?
I have to pull that over to the others.
Okay, and that's, that's why I was looking, I, you know, the only figure I, did you find?
Oh, I'm looking for something else. I can't. You're looking for a little while.
This number, this number is, is based off the number of current employees and their eligibility for this. So I'm not sure what happened last year, but...
Any more question on that? Number four. Resolved Resolution 2016 R 172 to authorize the mayor to contract with Butch Durrell an amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. And Butch is not here. Uh, and I think this contract, it's been the same contract since I've been on the council. So nothing's...
Nothing changed.
Nothing changes for this contract concern, so...
That was my only question.
Amount of dollars stays the same.
All, all the same.
These are the same contracts.
Other's job.
I don't know if we need to improve, uh, as far as the period, uh, in the amount of thirty-two thousand not to exceed one year or whatever, or is already in the contract?
It's in the contract.
It's based on the monthly payment and we got a third day out.
The only, the only change is, uh, no, no real change in this. But Butch has been under the same contract for however many years he's been here, as long as I can remember. We have added in each of the contracts, we're reviewing, and we have three before you today. There'll be more coming, uh, as we're reviewing all the current existing contracts. Uh, the one thing that I am making sure that we add to each of those is, um, a recording requirement. Most of them do not have a recording requirement. The ones that did have a recording requirement haven't really been enforced. And so that is one thing that we'll be looking for going forward so that we actually know what, what's been produced.
And also his contract term is a one year. You guys at the bottom, if you want to...
It has to be a new year, every year?
New year, every year. Go turn to the audience now, if there's any, any questions about Mr. Durrell's contract.
You know who we're talking about, right?
All right, number five. Resolved Resolution 2016 R 173 to authorize the mayor to contract with Network Support Technologies an amount of forty-one six hundred, one thousand six hundred dollars. And this is, uh, Bill Clifton. He's a network provider, if you've got him. Also, his contract hasn't changed. The salary's the same. Nothing's really changed on this contract. But he's the guy that does all that with network, while police and fire and all these, uh, Mr. Mill... And he's in the library, I think, the library also. So, uh, he's not here, but his contract is, is the same also. And it's got a one-year, one-year, uh, term also here.
And third day out, so...
Any discussion, counsel? Turn to the audience now, if there's any, any question? No question. I like you guys, yeah, so forth. Resolved Resolution 2016 R 174 authorized the mayor to contract Patricia Burt's an amount of twenty-four thousand, uh, dollars. And... That's Patricia. Mayor, I'll let you handle this one.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, as y'all, I think, know, at least again, those of you who've been on the council, know that the mayor's allowed an appointee, uh, that could be a city employee. This is, uh, taking the place of that appointee, this, this request for this contract. Rather than have a, a permanent employee through the mayor's appointee option, I've opted to go this way. And, um, Patricia has been, as you all know, has been, been working a lot and helping up to this point. But she will help in the transition as well as a number of other things. Reviewing all these contracts and working as a liaison with those who, who are contractual with us. Doing some employee training, uh, her background experiences in operations. She's probably an expert in that. So that's my recommendation.
For y'all, Patricia, for y'all to know, can you stand and let them see who you are? For the ones that don't know who you are, that's, that's Ms. Burt's. Everyone that should be working hand in hand with the mayor, uh, getting stuff that we need for council meetings and things like this. So, uh, council, any questions from the council?
I think it'd be an asset.
I do have one question, uh, mayor. Where'd just money come from? I turn to the audience now to see if you have any, any question concerning, uh, Ms. Burt's contracts and mayor's appointee.
I just wanted to say, I've seen this young lady in action and she really is a hard worker. And I think she'd be of really great support for the mayor and the city council.
All right, number seven. Resolved Resolution 2016 R 175 to designate Montclair Road Branch of BD and T Bank as the possessor of the funds of city of Irondale. And I, and I think... Mayor, if I'm wrong, this is just to get your name on everything, one, one region. Well, that's, and that's something we have to do, and change it over.
Yeah, it's, it's not, there's not a change. ADI will update the signatories on, on the banking. But it, it is, again, just officially designated that BD and T, Montclair Branch, will be the, the banking institution for the city. What you've been, been using in the past, recent past.
Yeah, we had about four or five banks in the past. And about a year ago, we moved it over into this one, all in one.
It's, it's really a housekeeping item. Any questions? Any question from the audience, from, from that one? That's good. Alright, resolution number, no, eight, resolution twenty sixteen R one seven six, appoint Walter Stewart and Kendrick L S C to be the city of currency. Let me begin with this one, I, I've talked with Leslie about this one, and, and I told her that this contract, and I know the council can agree with this, you, you may not, for three councils back. This contract has been the most controversial contract we've had throughout the city. And I think it would be a great ideal to have Leslie here at a work session, so she can pass up any question that the citizen have pertaining to her, to her contract. She's not here tonight, and I don't think, I thought it would be fair for us to discuss it really without her being, without her being here.
Rob, can you discuss it, Rob? Here you go.
Yes, I, I, I told Leslie that I don't, this is an opportunity for her, but her name is on it, I know Rob's gonna be working with her, but Leslie's class and name is on this contract. And it's not fair for her not to be here and not discuss it with her. So I told her that this, I think we need to put this off in a work session by herself, so she can come and ask questions, answer questions from the public. Because I don't want the next four years to be harrassed about this contract, I don't, I don't think the council wants to do that either. This is one of the most, 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 uh, this contract has been the most controversial since we've been here, you know, and I wanna make sure that the people of Irondale, and, and I think they do a great job, and they know that, they, I, I told them that. They do a great job, but, uh, but I told her that I think that it's fair to her, she's not here, uh, defendants, so, uh, that's my point, I'm gonna have a discussion from the-
She will be here tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I told, that's, that probably will be the time to discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's get in a work session and hammer, and hammer it out, uh, in a work session, I think it's just-
Well, I talked to her last night, I mean, last week, and she answered all my questions about it, and, and, uh, what I understand is gonna save the city some money and the maximum we would have to pay if, uh, they had to do additional litigation or additional research or, or, or so forth for us. The maximum would be, would be, uh, equal to, uh, what we, uh, what we had last year, is that correct?
But the, the litigation portion would be a cap that-
It'd be a cap, yeah, and that would be equal to the monthly payment we had last year.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's the most we-
If there's litigation, if there isn't, then you can make a lesser amount.
And we take, say, five thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Without the litigation part. But there, there are some other, other, other parts of the contract that needs to be discussed with her. So I just think, 'cause I, I, I know you guys have a lot of questions, 'cause I've heard it.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest, the biggest thing that most people were complaining about is the cost that we were paying, you know, we're paying three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a law firm, and we're in Irondale. I mean, Irondale's great, but go out, go ask, um, Mountain Brook how much they paid for legal fees last year. Not quite that. Um, the other things, the other, like you said, other provisions within the contract, I mean, five percent sales on, five percent, uh, fees on all, in, um, uh, land sales? Even when they have no, uh, work involved in it at all?
So-
I mean, that's just-
It's three percent. Three percent. It's three percent.
Okay, three percent, three percent of all land sales, even if they didn't even touch it.
Should I at least say what, where we're, what the real numbers are?
Well, the, uh-
Well, I don't care, I never know how it is.
Yeah, it went from, it went from, it went from three hundred thousand and, and, to two forty. That's, that's where it's going, from three hundred dollars to two forty, uh, but they still do the, uh, it's a thirty thousand dollars, uh, I'm just, I'm just gonna tell you, you need to know this, this is public information. They still get paid thirty thousand dollars for courts. Alright, so now I'm back up at two seventy. Yeah, yeah.
Three hundred, two forty.
Three thousand.
And then also- They also get three percent on the real estate deal, if they close on it. And we don't have to choose them to do any bond issues, we can also, if we choose them to do the bond issue, then we can also go outside.
Yeah, but, but we pay them whether they're involved in it or not, according to the old contract.
Well, this, this contract state, we don't pay them if they don't close any real estate deal. Yeah, correct.
That's correct.
If it doesn't close.
If it doesn't close.
If it doesn't close, they don't get paid, they don't get paid anything, so that clause, that it doesn't, you know, that clause, and we don't have to, we don't have to choose them to close any real estate deal.
Right.
Stayed in, stayed in the new, new contract.
That's usually factored into the price, too.
Right, that's right.
So, I- Well, I, I'm just, just, because I'm the one that negotiated it with them, so let me, let me just state it, it's, it's pretty similar to what you heard, but I, I was under the same impression of some of the council when I was sitting out here. Uh, and so I, I just want you to, I just want everybody to have the real numbers on that, it is three percent, I've heard ten percent, you know, rumor, I heard five percent, and I heard different things. And, and I will tell you that I was surprised when I heard ten percent, why should that be, you know, on a transaction like that? Three percent, I understand, because it is, it is really a real estate broker's commission, one side of it, really, because you're gonna pay five to seven, eight percent, uh, total on commission. So, so I don't have heartburn over the, the three percent if they close the, the real estate, uh, deal. The, the general agreement for city legal services has been three hundred thousand dollars a year, twenty-five thousand dollars a month over the past couple of years. I'm not sure how far back that goes, but at least for the previous year. Uh, I met with them and, and we sat down and talked, and I'll give Patricia credit for part of this, because she pushed me a little bit farther than, than I was thinking, but I, anyway, we, we ended up, at, at the end of the day, we ended up, uh, with an agreed upon rate of two hundred and forty thousand, which is twenty thousand dollars a month. I can tell you, I'm sure there are cities that, that pay less than that, and there's some that pay more than that, I know that for a fact. Um, we, we did a quick, um, phone call to, to cities of comparable size around here, and I can tell you that, um, twenty thousand dollars is not out of the ballpark for what some of the cities are, are paying. That partly depends also on what you've got going on. Uh, you know, there are some cities that are not doing anything, they're not growing, they're not, you know, they don't need legal services as much, and there are others that need it more. But I would just say from my standpoint, I felt good about where we arrived on the agreement. Uh, you know, sixty thousand dollar reduction from last year over a term of forty years, that's, that's real money, that's two hundred and forty thousand dollars on that one single, uh, contract, so-
Let me give you a little insight, if I can, on our previous, uh, attorney, Greg Marsh, in the year two thousand fourteen. He received a four hundred and two thousand dollars, no, that wasn't four, twelve, twelve. He received four hundred and two thousand dollars in attorney's fees from the city of Irondale, plus a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars as a commission from Corey Watson, another attorney that we use. So, in one year, he received six, six hundred thousand dollars of the city's money, so three hundred thousand dollars compared to what that's half, they're charging us half what he, what he received.
Yeah, so let me, and, so let me just tack, tack on just the last, last little bit of the negotiation. Bond, um, sell bonds, legal work for that, that was something that, it, it is in there, if we choose to use this law firm, uh, then they will be paid out of the proceeds from that bond. So what that does for us is, it allows us to, to use any firm that we choose to use. Um, you know, I mean, assuming that we have a good working relationship and we get a good price from this firm, that may be the one we do, or it may not be the one we choose. Uh, I particularly also like the cap on the, the litigation, you can't predict what the future litigation is going to be. And so at worst, we are only back at where you were last year. Uh, at best, we're sixty thousand dollars less, uh, per year on that, so, um, so I, I, I think those are all very positive. I, I do think we're protected under, um, any ongoing, any current ongoing litigation that we have, uh, is covered under the blanket agreement. So, if, if we choose, chose not to renew this agreement with them, then we would, um, we'd be, we'd, we'd have to go out and hire that legal work, and I can tell you that would be extremely expensive to do that. So that's, that was, just so you understand my thought process and, and the negotiation part on, on that, uh, that, that's how we came to where we, where we were, so, for whatever it's worth.
And I think-
Those are the real numbers.
I think from our session this past week at the leading municipalities, one thing they emphasized to everybody in the room, think very hard and long before you change legal counsel, no matter what the circumstances, especially if you have pending litigation. That is one of the biggest mistakes you could ever make, and they were very emphatic on that. Um, and we do have something, or a few things out there that are definitely in that category at this time.
And anything, any litigation that's out there that predates this contract is covered by the old contract, so it's not like we're instantly getting into an agreement where we're back to where we started.
Anything we know about now is covered.
And that amount just went up, it was two years, it, it wasn't four years as far as the increase that we paid the Walter firm, it was two years. Yeah, two years ago.
So effectively, we rolled it back to, to two thousand twelve.
Right, exactly.
I just have two questions, how long is the contract for, is that a one year, thirty ten year?
All the contracts are one year, right.
And, uh, on the prosecuting side, are they gonna carry that through to appeals, too?
Yes.
Okay. For, for, am I gonna have the outside appeal folks through city court?
Oh, no, 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 not for city court, this is, this city court is separate from what we're discussing here, that's a separate, separate budget, separate line of, uh, the judge will be hired on the city court funds, the prosecutor will be hired, and the public defender will be hired.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said prosecuting, too, that there was a thirty thousand, this city prosecutor.
John mentioned, John mentioned that from the, uh, from the prosecutor's side.
Yeah, it sounds like, number four is prosecutor service in municipal court, and handling municipal appeals, and this is paid by the city municipal, but that's what she just asked, right?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that's in their contract also, they'll do that also.
They'll do that, and they'll do the appeals?
If we, if we agreed to that part.
Okay.
Yeah, we may decide to take that part out, I don't know, or whatever the council.
They, they handled that at, you know, during the previous administration, and they're the ones who decided as far as who did their appeals. I know what you're asking, but yeah.
Oh, okay.
It was in their, it was in their court, you know, they handled it, the Walter fund.
Right.
Yeah.
But didn't, didn't the city pay? We end up paying those people separately.
Well, it was in the budget, they were included in the, in the, in the court, in the fine, in the court, but-
Yeah, but we were paying thirty-six, I think it was before, or thirty?
Thirty.
For the prosecution here, and then we were paying, I don't know what it was, to the outside, two appellate attorneys.
Yeah, we paid two appellate attorneys also.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's not this firm, no, that's-
Yeah, that's not, yeah, we, yeah, that's what he was asking, yes, but you're right.
Currently, this past year, uh, Walter Stewart Kendrick handled the prosecutor's side of the court.
Right.
And we had two appellate.
Right.
Which were some other firm.
Right.
Right, that paid, yeah, exactly.
Is that the same process today? Is my question.
Yeah, as, as, as of this contract, yeah, it's the same, it's the same.
But that's not a part of this agreement that we're discussing on this side.
Okay.
We're discussing the city attorney-
Just the city attorney side.
Just city attorney services, yeah.
I mean, the only reason I bring that up is because in the past, your prosecutor, your city prosecutor did both the appeals and the city prosecution.
We have, we have, the, the two ladies, Denise Williams and Libby Battle does that one.
Watch it.
Watch it, Libby just watched it, and Libby Battle does that, yeah, appellate one, yeah.
And there's a separate public defender, and of course-
Yeah, 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 public defender, I know, they have it from the state, so.
Which is not this firm.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that this doesn't change, police department currently now, if we, we have an issue, we have some issues coming up with the jail and stuff, and right now, we currently just contacted, uh, lawyers directly, is that, will that remain, stay the same?
That's still, that's still leaving you.
The provision is there, we'll talk about procedurally on that, but, but materially, materially, it has not changed. Procedures may change a little bit about how we go about that, um, but-
Any discussions from the council?
I'm good with it, I've talked to Leslie, and she's answered all my questions.
Did the same, she, she tried to contact each of us individually, so.
Any other questions from the audience? Resolution twenty sixteen R one seven seven, appoints municipal judge, um, now, this one, uh, this council, we're gonna have to postpone, uh, because we have a judge right now, and we haven't had any interview, so we can't appoint a judge.
Well, he's going to take office till after, before the year.
We haven't, we haven't sent out any RFPs or anything about judges, so we're gonna have to postpone this one until we do all that, get that stuff taken care of. So we can't, we can't appoint a judge tomorrow, what name we gonna give?
If I could, if I could just say, this was, this was put on there, because normally you do this at your organizational meeting, but I agree with you a hundred percent, you know, you, in my opinion, and this is your appointment, so you, you do it how you, how you choose, but in my opinion, you should, as John suggests here, you should take resumes or applications, interview, go through it just like any other job, interview, and select the best qualified available person for the job, yeah.
I, I just have one comment, uh, and I totally agree with what you're saying as far as sitting down and discussing before we actually assign someone, but I would also like to include, um, Judge Bell as far as recommendations. Judge Bell has been on the, on the Irondale bench for four years, and, and as you can remember, I know, Terry, you and myself, when we came in, the court was a mess. It, it was a mess. And if it wasn't for Judge Bell and also Judge Bishop, I can't remember his first name, I think it was Brad.
Right.
Yeah, um, from the city of Hoover, they came in and totally revamped our court, uh, here in the city, and they knew exactly, uh, what we needed, which direction we needed to be in. And therefore, just having that recommendation from Judge Bishop and, uh, Judge Bell, so it can be some continuity there as far as how we, you know, handle situations here in Irondale, because we had a unique situation here. Uh, if everyone can remember, um, you know, we were in, we, we were in our needs, uh, as far as, uh, how can I say this, uh, not being in control, let me say that, from the city standpoint, being held liable for a lot of things that was going on here. So if we can get, uh, some input from Judge Bishop and, uh, Judge Bell, that would be, you know, that would be helpful.
That'd be excellent, but thank you, uh, you're a fantastic guy.
Okay, but it does, I mean, though we've got a very short time to get this completed, and everything changes first of the year.
First of the year, so, so, uh, Mayor, uh, I would, I would, if you, if you don't mind, I would get with, uh, city clerk, Mr. Stewart, uh, Patricia, and let's go ahead and send our RFP out, that we are looking for a judge, and let's, let's get him in, and let's, let's get him interviewed, and hope to report it, hope for Christmas, 'cause everybody will be traveling and doing different things, maybe we can get somebody in here.
Is that could be what we've done before, sent a request to postpone?
Yeah.
We just have, uh, ask the people, submit whatever they want really.
I thought we found the last. Remember, we'll just want to make it tomorrow night, and then, yeah. Councilman Cooley? When you wake up, there you go. Is it?
You said, yeah, so I didn't look up.
Counsel, maybe, counsel, uh, we're, we're in a work session, is there anything we can take away from this tonight?
Well, office agenda?
No, you'll have to do it in the meeting.
Tomorrow, at the meeting tomorrow?
Correct.
You can make recommendations, what you wanna add, and then, uh, take note, and change it tomorrow night here in the pre-council meeting.
Alright, I, I wanna, I wanna deal with, uh, ten, eleven, I'll spend with the buddy, then twelve, I'm sorry, any, any questions, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, pause.
Just a comment, when they wanna check with Leslie, because the judge shifts a two-year appointment, you may wanna at least suspend Judge Bell's until a replacement is there.
That's a good thought, that's a good thought.
Uh, Tony's gonna be, he's having, he's having, uh, his, his, um, court here in, on Thursday afternoon, he's wanting to be in court, it's county, during that timeout, I would think. his, his court here on Thursday afternoon, he's wanting to be in court at the county during that timeout, I would think.
No, he doesn't take office till January.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've got to do it before, before first January.
You do, but what I'm saying is, he's, he's- What I'm saying, Terry, is it's a two-year appointment for the judge. He was appointed in November, just like you're doing tonight, so that technically, his appointment's run out, so you may have to, you may have to just extend it till December thirty-first to cover what you're doing.
I misunderstood what you were trying to say, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, extend it till the end of the year.
Ten, eleven, twelve, I'm gonna deal with this, deal with the budget. I want to make a comment, and then I'll turn it over to you guys. I haven't, I haven't, as council president, haven't made my chairman's committee assignments. And out of respect for councilmen's privacy, I would love to have a work session and make committee assignments before we put this on the agenda, this is a job with finance. I know that's one, but you work in the bank, so I know that's what you're gonna do with your questions. But I would love to wait until I name you committee financial chairperson before we bring this forward. If council agreed with that.
I have a question about that.
The president, think about it before you say it, the president makes the, the president makes the committee assignment. I don't name him tonight as financial chairperson, I haven't made any other assignments until we have a discussion.
Yeah, I, I still have a question. As far as David working in the bank, I'm sure there's other, well, I can only speak for myself, as far as working on budgets in certain departments, so I don't think David will be the only one that will be knowledgeable as far as working on budgets, that's my comment.
I, I believe we all need to be on the most committee like we were last time.
We were, we all, we all, we all be on.
Except three, like we had three new councils.
We're all be on.
Any comments from the audience or anyone else on those two?
Um, I just have a question, so what you're saying is that David's gonna have a finance committee, but all the other, other council people will be on the committee?
That's correct, that's correct, that's correct.
Is not, is not.
That's correct.
It's a comment, I expect that.
We're all a part of it.
You have a finance committee, we're all, we're all a part of the finance committee.
But that was just a particular question.
Yeah, that's a good question. All right, I'm not, I'm not the one to shoot a jump shot. I'm the best one to shoot. I know. Ever seen my jump shot?
I was gonna ask that question too.
Ever seen my jump shot? Number thirteen. Number thirteen, right, my break. All right, thirteen, ordinance twenty sixteen, one eighty-one, command ordinance twenty fourteen ninety-two.
So let me, let me ask a question, what do you do with the budget to develop that?
It's still on there.
Okay.
We have to agree to tomorrow, to what, do we have what we're gonna do with it? No, just, that was just a comment, not maybe, that's, that's all. Resolution ordinance twenty sixty-one eighty-one. This is the, the councilman procedure ordinance that we have. I know it's gonna come up tomorrow, but have y'all, are you gonna have a copy of it?
I've got a couple of changes that I'd like to recommend, I could-
Yeah, well, well, there's a lot of changes on here, and again, I think, I think we need to have a work session.
Basically, the same thing we had last year.
It's not, it's not this.
It's just copying last year, what I could see.
It's a starting point for you.
I didn't see any, I didn't see any changes.
Well, let me show you, let me tell you a couple of changes on here, all right? Administrative assistant, we don't have that.
What section are you talking about?
That's in the agenda, section ten, talk about administrative assistant, we don't have that.
Well, that's what Carolyn was, what you work for.
That's correct, but we don't have that anymore, so that has to change. That's a discussion, that's also, has been a discussion on changing the meeting time. Instead of having a pre-council, having a work session, just like we're doing tonight, and then have a, go right into our council meeting on the day we, we talk, but that's, again, that's, that's the discussion. That may need, that may need to happen. Have to use this time for the audience to have any questions they wanna ask tonight, instead of having that on, on council night.
Where y'all have people come to council night that won't be here on, on the work, in a work session.
But that's, that's just, that's just a comment, that's just a comment. But there are some things in here that needs to, that needs to change, that we need to go through it and make sure we get it all changed for, because you can't adopt this when we don't have, have some of the stuff that is.
Well, this, right, right now, this is in place, this is-
And this is, this is what we're going, and this is what we're going by.
Yeah, well-
Until we, until this is changed.
Until by this, until we change it, I mean, there will be a pre-council meeting before-
That's correct.
Did we, we noticed that, though?
No, it, it was, that, that is, it's in an ordinance, what's it, two thousand and-
Since two thousand and twelve.
Right, yeah.
It requires pre, or nothing. How, does it require you to post that like we do the regular meeting?
We need to post it.
Posting on the voting board out here and on the other three locations we've got.
You don't have a work session?
No, where that's pre-council, it's not a work session, we call it pre-council.
Yeah, the pre-council.
It has to be noted, it's like, if this one's noted for tomorrow night, it's just a pre-council.
Well, it, it will be, I mean-
It's the same, it's the same, we have to go by this ordinance and tell it.
But it was posted, that's all I'm saying.
Should be, should be posted.
So when we walk out here, we'll be on the voting board.
Should be posted. I'm not sure, but I, I didn't see it. But we have to go by this until we change, and there are some changes in here that needs to happen, and we need to talk about it.
At any time, we have to agree to go off of that until we can change.
There's some ordinance that the permanent mention should change.
We have to go off of this till we change it.
Till we change it, right. And personally, you don't wanna change this, anything tomorrow in, in council meeting. This needs to be changed in a work session, discussion in a work session, and then brought back. Any discussion from the council?
So you're just, you're gonna pay tomorrow night?
If, if, there was a motion on the table to do that.
I think we need to.
That's, that's gonna be told up to you.
I think the citizens also should have a chance to talk about it as well, because if we're talking about making a change to something, we need to make sure we change it in a manner that's not prohibited, that doesn't prohibit public comment.
Correct.
Because I know that's been a, a pain point, that sometimes we get into pre-council, make some, you know, adjustments to the agenda, pass some things on consent, whatever, and, and no one had an opportunity to put input in to it, so any changes, the public needs to be able to chat about it as well.
That's correct. Because also, in section nineteen, it states that we should be using Robert rules of order. Some of us know, some of those rules, some of us know all of those rules. So that's an opportunity for this new council to bring in someone and make sure that we all look to them on the Robert rules of order.
Without change happening.
Yeah, because we sure haven't kept this two minutes, we haven't.
There's some things in here, there's things in here that we need to discuss at a work session that are very important. And I know it's gonna benefit the council, but it's gonna benefit citizens of Hurdell, how we, how the meetings are run, and we're up to two minutes.
There's some legal issues involved with all of that too, that we can help you with.
That's correct. So, so it's important that we have Leslie, if someone will be here, and you have a copy of this, I think.
I did.
You do?
I did.
Okay, all right. And then, any discussion from the question, the audience about?
Yeah, I'm gonna provide a copy of the-
Well, then make sure we have a copy of this to pass out at the next work session.
Sorry.
So everybody have a copy.
Yeah, we can also upload it to you if you wanna post it.
You can get it to Darryl and get it on his website, I can spread it out.
Do you wanna copy the old one, or you wanna, wanna rewrite it?
Uh, just whatever y'all are gonna upload on, I mean, just before, the good thing about what y'all doing here is you're getting more information out than you have in the past. So the more information you get out pre-stuff, the less you're gonna have at city council night. And so like I said, if you can provide the documents that you're gonna, if you have contracts or documents or stuff for, for a council meeting, if you can provide those pre, then it can be, Darryl can put it out on the website, and other folks can just spread it out through the social media sites and other, other avenues.
Well, okay. Any other, any other discussion on that one?
Well, if we're gonna come back at later time and discuss, I'll hold my comments to end.
Okay, yeah, and we're gonna make all, we're gonna make all appropriate changes at that, that time. Okay, thank you, sir.
Now, now, let me, let me say something. I'm gonna be on vacation the Saturday after Thanksgiving till, I think, the twelfth of December, so I will not be at the first meeting. See, it'll be, I'll be back on the, on the thirteenth, but I won't be here for the December sixth, if y'all want to postpone that meeting till the next week. Well, we got one on the sixth and one on the twentieth, what I'm saying is, you know, there's no problem, y'all have a meeting on the sixth without, without me here, but just let you know that I won't be here that day.
All right, number fourteen.
These are public hearings, we can't discuss them till we get to public hearing.
We can't discuss it, uh, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Yeah.
Of course, they're all public, they're all public, it's public hearing. So we can't, we can't discuss those until tomorrow night. Okay, all right, that's the agenda for tonight, that's the agenda for tonight. First of all, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the public if you have any question about anything that we just, if we can't answer, but we'll make sure we're, we're trying very hard to get that answer for you before we leave tonight. All right, Mayor, you have, you got a couple of comments you want?
Yeah, I have a few.
Oh, before you go, let me ask the council, do they have comments? What value they have?
Yeah, I'll stand up where I can see folks.
Let me, well, to start, I did think of something, all right, going back to this number thirteen. It bothered me to remember, two councilmen ago, we passed an ordinance that any council member, whether it missed three consecutive council meetings, that it was, it would be suspended, his pay would be suspended, and I might want to look that up, we need to take that ordinance into consideration when we, when we do this. Take, and number thirteen.
I believe it's in there.
Section, section nine.
There is a provision in here, but that's, there is a provision here, but that is a separate ordinance, and it is in effect even when this one goes in effect, it's, it's gotta be dealt with individually.
Section nine, depends on regular schedule of city council meeting, may be compelled, concerning Alabama Code eleven forty-three fifty-one, and all councilmen, it may impose a fine of fifty-two hundred dollars for any failure of a mayor or his council member to attend, except in the case of sickness and extended illness.
But there is another ordinance that says that they must free consecutive meetings, then their, their pay is suspended until the council approves. And I think we need to find that, and I've, I've been looking for it, but I don't have it on my computer.
There's a new state law also, we, that was touched on at the training that we did the other day, that, that says after ninety days, you're removed, so they're really taking care of that from law. But you can do, you can do whatever you want, but I'm probably willing to bet that you never find anybody.
I just, you know, well, we had the council member, the reason it was-
I understand.
Opposed, it was just ideal, you don't come to council anymore.
It's good to have some provision in it, but like I said, the maximum is ninety days by, by state law, so.
Well, this just took up, you know, about forty-five days.
Right, all right, so, all right. Is that good for me to speak now, sir?
You can.
Okay.
All right, I'm pretty, I don't know. Just a, just a couple of things, two or three things I wanna comment, some of you may have seen our Facebook post the other day, after day two, I have to keep reminding myself that it's only been a week, but I did come back this week. I told the staff here, that was, I thought was a good sign. I referred to some comments also that have been made in the past, someone posted, someone here in this audience posted. Be interesting to see what's uncovered by the new administration. There are fourteen hundred and sixty days in my term here as mayor, now I'm finishing up day eight, so that means I've got fourteen hundred and fifty-two days to make a difference. That's the way I look at it, so that's, and I think this council, the same way, looks at it that way, that, that we're elected to lead, and we intend to do that, and I think we're off to a good start. Thank you, council president, and the rest of the counselors for, for your, for good work and cooperation. Communication's gonna be important for us going forward, you saw several items on this agenda tonight that we postponed. Some of that was anticipated prior to this meeting, but was to get those items on the agenda so that they could get discussed in the future. For example, the last one that we looked at, the ordinance of the meetings, we knew that that was just a copy of the previous, previous action, and we knew that things had changed, and things would need to change in that, and so I think it's right that you take the time to, to go back and, and really do that right. So, so I say all that to say that there are more good things to come. I think the communication will improve, the information flow will, will improve, I'm committed to that. It's slower than I want it to be right now, but I'm on day eight, finishing up day eight, so I guess, you know, again, I'm just gonna have to be patient, I'm like the guy who said to God, you know, I want patience, and give it to me right now. I'm, I'm not, I'm real patient on those kinds of things, but, but I'm working on it. So we, we will work very hard to communicate both internally to each other, and we'll work very hard to communicate to the public that we're elected to serve. There are three or four things, and I'm only throwing these out not for discussion, but just to let you know some of the things that we will, we will be looking at from an administrative standpoint, talking about, and I've not had a chance to dig deep with this with the department heads, the committees, but, but they are on the radar, at least, to look at and to consider. One of the things is, I'm kind of amazed at the number of vehicles we have in the parking lot, and so we're looking at how vehicles are used, and making sure that we're getting good use out of that, and getting good mileage, if you will, out of, out of our, our plans for, for vehicle use amongst that. There are three, I call them big items, I think they're, they're items that are of opportunity and items that we can, we can make good decisions on going forward that I want us to look at closer. The sanitation garbage pickup, and how we do that, and how we look at it, talked with Frank some about that, and we're gonna be reviewing that, I'm gonna be asking some folks to join me on kind of a task advisory team to do some research, to look at the different options, and, and are we doing it the most efficient way? And are we using our resources most wisely in veteran, all the areas? The jail is another thing that I want us to look at, Chief and I have not had an opportunity to talk, but we, I want us to look at that and say, is that, is that really efficient use of our manpower, our resources, our time, all of what we have, or is there a better solution? I don't know the answer to these things, but I know the questions, and so we're gonna be asking the questions and looking at that. I was not elected to be popular, I was elected to lead, and one of the things that we're gonna, the third thing, I said, the garbage, the jail, the third thing's gonna be the four versus five-day work week. We're gonna look at that, we're gonna see, is that the most efficient use and best use of our resources and our time and our time? Now, I recognize that- Now, I recognize that I'm not gonna get all the positive posts tonight, um, on Facebook by saying those things, but I want you to know, I wanna be transparent, I wanna be open, that, that there are no sacred cows, as far as I'm concerned, we'll look at it, if there are, we'll barbecue them. But, um, we're, we're just gonna look at it, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna research it, we're gonna get the facts about it, and we're gonna analyze those facts, and we're gonna make the best decision we can for the residents that live in Ardenale. Seems reasonable to me, what about, what do you think?
Sounds reasonable, I think so.
That's what we're gonna do. So, so communication, transparency, those sorts of things, look, look for more of that out of us. It, it's a working pro, process and progress, uh, but I think we're off to a great start. Thank you guys for, uh, your leadership, what you do. That's it, all right? Motion.